And we'll call this workshop to order. And we've already called roll and established a quorum as present. Item number three, open workshop for the purpose of discussing the maintenance agreement between the San Antonio River Authority and the City of Kennedy pertaining to Escanito Park and discussion regarding conveyance of the city-owned acreage residing within Escanito Park to the San Antonio River Authority. I believe we have one signed up for public comments. Shelby Duknik, Shelby, are you here this evening?
We had Pastor Wali Shibabine here to give us a prayer, a rule of prayer.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, Pastor Shibabine was nice enough to pray for us during the last meeting, so Pastor, if you can come forward. Everyone will please rise.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, and your servant David wrote these words in the 133rd Psalm. He said, "Behold how good and pleasant it is when brothers dwell together in unity. It's like the precious oil on the head running down on the beard of Aaron, running down on the collar of his robes. It is like the dew of Herman which falls on the mountains of Zion, for there the Lord has commanded the blessing, life forevermore." Father, we give you thanks this day for the city council. We give you thanks for our mayor and for all who serve in offices in this county. We also give you thanks for the citizens who have contributed so much time and money to this Escanito Parkway project. Father, we give you thanks for the San Antonio River Authority, for the skill and expertise that they bring and that they continue to offer. Lord, we ask that in this meeting, keep heads cool. You let peace and unity reign among us, so that the best outcomes for all the citizens of Karnes County, of Kennedy, Texas, can be lifted up and given the honor they're due. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you again Pastor Shibabine, we really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I believe Shelby, do you have some comments? Please step forward, thank you.
Again, my name is Shelby Duknik, I'm the Commissioner in Karnes County, but I'm here representing myself, as I live in 125 Boulogne Drive here in Kennedy, Texas. Today, I'm here to support the San Antonio River Authority, as I refer to them as SARAH from here on forward, and I would like to proceed for them to have total control of Escanito Parkway. The Escanito Parkway is in a flood zone. This is what SARAH does, SARAH manages flood zones. They also manage several other parks that are in flood zones. And then I might say they do a very good job wherever they've come in, and to take care of a property, it's always been better than what they have found it. SARAH has, they have the knowledge and the means and trained staff to accomplish this task. The Escanito Parkway is one of several parks, as I've said, that is SARAH's system, and we're very lucky to have that park in our city. The thing I like about SARAH is that they do their performance in maintenance, they do upgrades as they see that need to be done, and they do them timely, and they do them very professionally. The maintenance upkeep on the Escanito Parkway is very expensive, as I'm sure your park is very expensive too, to take care of. And that being said, to me, that would free up money from your budget to do other things with, if Escanito Parkway continues to be in total control of SARAH. The city, in my opinion, stands, they manage the city parks, but sometimes they're slow to react to corrective measures where SARAH, in my experience of seeing them, they see something, they can try to attack it right away that day. And it's evident, when there was some graffiti on the skate park, they got in there, and I don't think many people did, it was just graffiti there, but they cleaned it up and corrected it right away. Again, SARAH, if you look at it from when it first started to what it is now, you know, the grass, there wasn't much grass. The guys there have worked hard, growing grass. We had a minor flood in the park area. They went right away, after some water went down, they would clean it up. There was people walking that same day. They did their due job diligence, and they went out and continued to work on the park and getting it back in main operation. I think SARAH, I don't know, I'm just throwing this number out, I don't know exactly how much they spend yearly in maintenance, but I'm gonna say it's in the millions of dollars where to take care of everything, the whole system that they give back to different communities. To me, SARAH is a blessing in disguise, in maintaining the park, and also the funding that they do for the park. A good measure to look at, added to the quality of the park and the amenities and the freedom to cover the property by walking, the walking trails, biking trails, the water park, the picnic tables, and this past weekend we had a great, I guess, a Sunday, a Saturday out, and people all enjoyed it. If you looked around, you saw people sitting tables all over the place, and they enjoyed it. I guess my time's about up, but I really would ask that y'all consider letting SARAH have total control of the park. Thank you.
Thank you Shelby, we appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience that would dare to speak at this time? If not, then I would like to begin the workshop with a question for our city attorney, Ms. Gad. There are a couple of emails that I have here regarding this topic, and I believe my understanding is that in order for the details of those emails to be discussed, the council needs to vote or to agree to waive attorney-client privilege, is that correct?
That was just, you know, me, it would be fine for you all to share, you know what is in the memo in this meeting. It was more so the document itself, you know, forwarded on, and it is up to you. Attorney-client privilege is always up to the client, you know, to waive.
And I'll ask the council, is everybody in agreement that we can discuss the details in that memo? Does anyone have any objections to it, let me put it that way? If not, then we'll proceed. Mr. Lynn, do you have a presentation regarding this?
Not really so much a presentation, Mr. Mayor, but I'd like to draw some attention to a few things. And I need someone to be an example from the council.
Don't all jump up.
Somebody, okay, Councilman Robert Higginson, real quick, do you own property in the City of Kennedy?
Yeah.
Okay, do you keep up the property, or does the City of Kennedy keep up the property?
I keep it.
Okay, do you have an agreement with the City of Kennedy?
No.
Why not?
Because I take care of it.
Because it's your property, right? Okay, let's keep that in mind. The reason there is an agreement, the reason why we have an agreement with SARAH, is because SARAH owns just over 12 acres, and the City of Kennedy owns just over eight acres, i.e. the maps I just gave you. That is why there is an agreement, it's why it exists. If the city council elects at an open meeting, not tonight, to bequeath the eight acres to SARAH, then we effectively will do away with the agreement between the City of Kennedy and SARAH. There will be no need to have an agreement between the City of Kennedy and SARAH, because SARAH will then have possession of all 21 acres of land, it will all be theirs, and it will all be theirs to upkeep. Okay? So this is why this agreement exists, because there are two owners to the land. So we must keep this in mind as we're here to discuss this agreement. So before we can move forward on the agreement, we really do need to discuss our intentions with the acreage, okay? If you look on the map, the map shows you where our eight acres are. Okay? SARAH effectively owns the acreage closer to Joe Delly Park, and in the way there it was in Sports Complex, and back off that way, and we effectively own the acreage closer to Fifth Street and Pullman Street. So just so you have an idea of where it's at, this comes straight off the Karnes County CAD, I did this today, so they've had numerous times to get this up there. That said aside, SARAH does do a great job with what they do. I'll testify to that. I've driven down 181, when we've had a seven-inch torrential rain, and I parked my truck on the side of 181, and I looked at the floodwaters all the way up, all the way back, and then I've come back two days later, and there's not a hint of debris in my seat. So they do a really big job of keeping it up. So when Mr. Duknik is standing up here praising them, that's good, they do. But at the end of the day, the question that we have to ask ourselves is this, do we need this agreement or not? And if we need the agreement, then we must maintain the eight acres. If we don't need the agreement, then personally, as your city manager, I don't see any reason why we don't bequeath it under the guidelines that Ms. Gad has taken to find out how we could do it. So just so that you all know, we've already, as a municipality, including the 4B, put in over $2 million, just as the City of Kennedy, into this park. So anyway, I just wanted to let you all know, if we're gonna give them the acreage, we don't have any need for an agreement at all whatsoever, because that's what that agreement does. It says who's gonna do what at the park, and it's because there are two homeowners.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. I see we have two board members from SARAH here this evening, and also several professional staff members from the River Authority. Is there anyone that would like to speak at this time? Mr. Baze, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Nice to see you, thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Again, good evening, I'm Derek Baze, I'm the general manager of the River Authority. I was here in front of y'all a couple months ago, give or take. Just a couple things, we are not in total agreement on city manager's definition of what is owned or not, and by whom. We have our own map here, we have our real estate staff that have done a full title search. Ms. Allison Elder is our attorney and can speak to that. So, you know, we were not, we came to this meeting prepared to discuss what the council asked us to look at last time, are there ways to convey property? And working with our legal counsel and your legal counsel, we agree that yes, there are ways, whether it's an easement, whether it's a text dotted lease, or the land that's owned by the city itself, there are always to convey that, that the city can convey that without an issue. As it comes to the maintenance and the agreement, I was not aware that this was a question until about five minutes ago, I would, without doing any additional research, or, you know, just being made aware of it, one issue that I would say does require an agreement would be police and security oversight, because we do not have a police force. So I would just throw that out there for the council to consider. Again, without having any preparation for that particular issue, we obviously were prepared to discuss the legal lane conveyance. Allison, did I miss anything?
Good evening, my name is Allison Elder, I'm the Director of Legal Services at the San Antonio River Authority, and I did work with your prior counsel, Megan Santi, to draft the lease that we have right now on the property. I also am familiar with the work of our real estate department, right-of-way agents, who acquired the property, which is subject to the lease. So I would like to just be here to provide any factual information that's of assistance to you all. The map that you're looking at, and that we have here as well, is showing you the lease hold interest, which is 19.8128 acres. The lease document, which was filed of record, lists each one of these parcels individually. And the fee ownership of the City of Kennedy is about 70%, 68% of the property. There also is an easement, a permanent easement, that was acquired by, from one of the families, which is an assignable interest. And then, as indicated in blue on the exhibit, there's a property that's owned by Textod, and that, you know, Textod was not willing to convey, and so that property is subject to, again, an assignable agreement between the City of Kennedy and Textod. So I'm not aware of any property that the San Antonio River Authority owns, and I am sorry, we did not have more clarification about y'all's understanding of the property ownership earlier, so that we could try and get this clear. But I do think the lease interest itself, if you look at that document, is pretty clear, because it lists each of the seven parcels, it lists the conveyance instrument, it has meets and bounds, and a surveying plat for each one of those properties. And again, each of those seven properties named in the leasehold interest corresponds to the exhibit that we've prepared for you tonight. With regard to the need for a operation and maintenance agreement, this is a practice that we have with many of our governmental partners. We use this for the museum reach and the mission reach in San Antonio, as well as the San Pedro Creek Park. And honestly, the primary purpose of the maintenance and operation agreements is just to set some shared common standards about how the organization providing maintenance will continue to do that. So it gives you some assurance about how often we will be emptying the trash, doing power washing, how quickly we'll be removing graffiti, what type of landscaping we would be putting in, and how often we would be changing the landscaping. It's just really to provide some clarity, so that everybody is on the same wavelength and has the same expectation about what is an appropriate level of maintenance for a piece of property. And that's why we had proposed in this lease to provide you that assurance, that we would be maintaining it to this standard that we maintain all of our other parks. And then, as our general manager is saying, you all are providing a very valuable service by providing the police oversight for the park. You may remember that we had some of the property incorporated into your city limits, so that your police could continue to provide that service. It's not something that we're able to provide, and it's something that's a very important governmental function. So I would recommend to my board that if we did have this conveyance of property to the River Authority, we would continue to work on the operation and maintenance agreement, so that your community had a seat at the table, both through the council action, as well as the citizens advisory board, and everybody could understand what they could expect from us with regard to the way we care for the property. So with that, that concludes my remarks, and I'm happy to take any questions you have now, or later on through the workshop.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Just to clarify, 19.81 acres is currently under lease-
Yes, sir.
...between the River Authority and the City of Kennedy?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lynn, I'm looking at an email that says SARAH wholly owns Escanito Park with the exception of eight acres in question. So where's the discrepancy or the disconnect?
That's what I need to address our city attorney. Ms. Gad, did you not prepare the ordinance for annexation of the Escanito properties into the City of Kennedy?
I have, yes.
And did you not see the letter that came from the San Antonio River Authority?
At the time, I believe I got, yes.
That outlined that they had owned 12 point some odd acres of that land on San Antonio River Authority's stationery? That is where it all comes from, Mayor. The areas that she has highlighted, if you go to the CAD, they do come back as the City of Kennedy, and the blue areas come back as the state of Texas. However, it is, and Ms. Gad will have to weigh in on this, but I am not certain that San Antonio River Authority could ever request annexation of property to which they themselves do not own. And if the City of Kennedy did in fact own this 13 some odd acres in yellow, as they have highlighted, then we would have had no need to have an ordinance annexing our own property in, which was already in our own city limits. So we have some conflicting documents from SARAH themselves versus this particular map, and an action that the city council of this city took under good faith, so that our police department could continue to patrol that area. That is why we annexed all that property in, was for that. And in so doing, we would not need an agreement anyway with anybody to do it, because it's part of the City of Kennedy.
I assisted with drafting that letter, I believe the rationale for presenting that letter was because we had a 99-year lease. I don't believe that letter asserted that we owned 12 acres of the property, but even if the letter did have that assertion, that would not affect the title to the property. Title is determined by what's filed in the real property records. And even if the San Antonio River Authority did send you a letter asserting that we owned 12 acres, that would have no effect on the ownership of the property.
Ms. Gad, can an entity or a person request annexation of property to which they themselves do not own?
Typically not, but we need the signatures of all the landowners.
Therefore, then, in this particular case, even though she is stating that this was under lease, if this other five acres that I did not present to the council tonight was under lease, then they would have had to come to the City of Kennedy to get our signatures to annex it into the city, correct?
Correct, if that is the case, yes.
And they did not do so.
We wrote the letter to the City of Kennedy, City of Kennedy was the recipient. So it would be essentially a letter explaining why we thought it was necessary to have the annexation- Yes. -so that police service could be provided, and suggesting that the city made that change on the property that the city owned. The request was being made on your behalf.
What I cannot tell is whether, you know, there was a miscommunication with us, not knowing what, who the property belonged to at the time, you know, at that time, that that was drafted into the city, we were on the deal. That's the miscommunication that I'm trying to, you know, discern at this time.
And we do have Kristin Hanson here, who I believe worked with your police chief on this particular matter, so she has personal knowledge of this. But I will say that, for purposes of the workshop tonight, I don't think your deliberation is contingent upon a shared understanding of the ownership of the property. Even if you are comfortable following the direction of your city manager, that the River Authority owns some, and that you all own some, you can still have some discussion about a possible benefit of moving forward with conveying the property you own, and then how such an agreement would be structured. And of course, anything that you are interested in moving forward with, would have to go to the board of the San Antonio River Authority as well. So no decisions would be made tonight. We're just here to be a resource to you, and not to advocate either way.
Whether it's eight acres or 20 acres-
Correct.
-it's still the decision before the council, whether or not we want to convey this property to the River Authority, in the long-term interest of sustaining wonderful maintenance that the River Authority has done with this park. And as Mr. Elpe brought to us at the last workshop, the concern is that a board sometime down the road in the future may look at this on paper and think, well, perhaps, you know, we need to reprioritize, because we don't own this property. They'll have a more vested interest in the property, if they have full ownership of the park, and more likely to maintain it for a longer period of time, and that's what I think everyone here wants. Anything else from the council members, or questions, or discussion, or ideas?
I know I've been very vocal about how I feel about this particular issue. The City of Kennedy, in my opinion, is not in the park business. SARAH is also in the park business, aside from what they normally do. I think what SARAH does is impeccable. I haven't been to all the parks that SARAH has done, I need to, but I haven't been to all of them. I think everything that they do is just great. I don't think this is a hard decision to make, even though no decision's gonna be made I think if an entity is going to invest a lot of time, money, energy into something that they don't own, they should have that ownership. I mean, it's, to me, it seems like a simple, simple thing. You know, I'm 100% in favor of conveying the ownership to SARAH, with whatever legal avenues we have to take to do that as a municipality. It just, to me, it makes the most sense. And I could repeat everything that, you know, Mr. Duknik said, or, you know, conversations I've had, but it all rings the same. You know, the same common denominator comes back when I talk to constituents and people that aren't in District 4, people that don't even live in Kennedy. They've all said the same thing, that if SARAH's going to continue to maintain the park and invest the time and energy and money into it, they should have the ownership. You know, if there's ways to put it into a clause, for example, well, if SARAH decided 25 years from now that they didn't want to own the park anymore, before they could sell it, or convey it to someone else, it would revert back to, we would have the first option of getting it back. I think that's a fair, you know, thing to put in there, if we can legally do that. I'm not an attorney, but, you know, if that's an option, to me, it's a no-brainer. I don't think the City of Kennedy is losing anything. You know, they're not gonna pick up the Parkway and move it, so I, you know, it's not that the city's gonna lose out on anything. If anything, we remove all liability from ourselves and hand it to SARAH.
I'd like to ask a question to Galen, if possible. Galen, could you tell us again how much money is being spent in the maintenance of the Escanito Creek Parkway right now through SARAH?
Good evening. Currently, our budget has around $320,000 a year for maintaining and operating it. As we all know, that will undoubtedly go up as time goes on, and that was, that was the key to bringing this all up to begin with. Down the road, years from now, when most of us are probably not even around anymore, and that dollar amount gets to be way up there, even more than that, somebody's going to say that, why are we spending that money down in Karnes County, when we don't even own that park?
Yes, and does that dollar amount, the $300,000 plus dollars, like today, or this year, budgeted for y'all, does that include the employees that you have out there, does that include their salaries as well?
I think it does, is that right? Here's a girl who knows.
I'm just, I'm just, dollar amounts, yes, it does, it includes their salary, their insurance, it includes the people, and it includes the toilet paper, and pressure washing equipment, everything to do with the park, that's that number.
Okay, so I fully agree with everything Mr. Douglas has said as well, that the park belongs in the hands of the expertise of SARAH. I think they've done a fabulous job. It's not that I don't think the City of Kennedy can, I don't think that at all, but that's a large number of money, a large amount, $300,000, that would have to be put into our budget, our city budget, to take care of that park, and pay the employees and what have you. Any of that SARAH ever left, and that's a serious thing that they could. And then, we're left taking care of that park, you know, we could just do it half as good as SARAH has done such a beautiful job. But that's more money that we'd have to consider in budgets, taking care of that park as well. You know, that's gonna require a lot of expertise, a lot of people that have to be educated to take care of that splash pad, and the native plants, and everything else that gets done out there, you know, and that doesn't even include the other park, it's coming.
Correct.
You have to remember, there's more coming. The second phase is in the works, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, that's a lot of work. So, that's a lot of work, and that's a lot of putting people in different places, and you can have so many wonderful things and just a few people taking care of that, but if you have that many few people, then they can't do a really good job, because they're spread too thin, there's just too much, and there's not enough days in a week for them to take care of that much. That's my concern too, but I fully agree with everything Mr. Douglas said. I think Serra's the best way to go.
Any other comments from the council?
I agree 100% with Mr. Douglas and Mrs. Holt. Y'all are doing a great job. My family loves it, we enjoy going out there. I'm very confident to see employees can handle it, I just don't think we should have to worry about that. Y'all are already doing a great job, it belongs in y'all's hands, and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I do agree with them as well. The only concern that I had the last time was whether we could do it legally or not, and I believe we can. Correct. Yeah, and I believe it should stay with Serra as well.
Any other comments from the council?
Put it on the next agenda so we can vote.
I'm glad we're in consensus here, that's-
Mayor.
Yes?
The only concern I have with it, and this is the only concern I have, is that even though I bring up about the annexation part to show that there's an acreage dispute there on that, at the end of the day, all that stuff is just dirt, okay? What really matters about the annexation part, why the annexation was such a huge deal, was so our police department could go down there and protect the residents of Carons County, not just Kennedy, that used that park. So my only concern would be, is should the council go in this particular direction, that they insist that the entire park stay within the corporate limits of the city of Kennedy, that way our police department has the freedom to come and go down there as needed for the protection of all the parkgoers. That would be my only concern on this.
I don't, I don't think Serra would probably object to that. I know I'm not speaking for them, but since they don't have a police department, you know, that's impossible.
So I think we would agree with city manager Lynn, as far as the park being in the city limits, and I've had multiple discussions with Chief Ash, of possibly entering into a memorandum of understanding. We've done, we've done that in other entities where, you know, they would come in and patrol and secure the area for us. It wouldn't necessarily have to be a city park, but they would be an MOU that we could do with the, with the city.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, could I make a-
Yes, absolutely.
I just want to make sure we, we're all on the same page here. This has been a wonderful partnership between the city of Kennedy and Serra to build this park. Included in that partnership has been all the people and companies that have donated money for the sake of getting it done, and it was a long, took a long period of time, it took a lot of work, a lot of efforts, and so that park is technically, if you go by who paid for it, it's owned by a lot of citizens of this community. This is not a power struggle. I'm representing it, when I'm up here now, I'm not representing the board of directors, I'm representing the Oversight Committee, because we're the committee that worked hand-in-hand with the staff to get this park built. The fundraising committee who helped get the money, Mark Thomas, the chairman of that committee, to get the money to get these amenities that we added to the park. We just, we just want the best path forward to continue to be able to provide for the citizens of Kennedy and Carons County the services in this park and to keep it done the way it is. And we just think that this process will be, it's no guarantee, but it will be the best path forward that we can get this done, and that's all it is. Like Mr. Douglas said, we can't move the park, we have no intention of moving the park, we don't want the park to be outside the city limits, we want it to be, we want to continue the partnership with the city of Kennedy, because that's how we got it built. We're just trying, we're just trying to look forward to the day when, when we may not be in the positions we're in anymore, and we want it to be the, to have the strongest hole that we can. I know a 99-year lease pretty much does the same thing as ownership, but it does it in people's minds. And in people's minds, and I'm sure that's probably why the, what we were talking about with getting it into the city limits, we probably had to provide our approval since we had it covered under a 99-year lease. But anyway, it's been a wonderful partnership with the city of Kennedy. Serra does those kinds of things. Everything we do, we partner up with other public entities to get them done, because you can do so much more working together than to try to pull your wagon along. And we're very, we just have strong feelings about that. We want this to continue for our citizens for as far down the road as possible, and that's all it amounts to. Thank you.
Thank you, Galen. I can't thank you enough, over and over again, for, I mean, you spearheaded this effort years ago, and it's been a tremendous success. As far as what I'm hearing from the members of this community, this park's been tested over the past year with a couple of flooding events, and it's held up very well, and it's just a beautiful thing here in the city of Kennedy. So thank you again for everything that you've done to make this a reality. Ms. Gad, just to make sure I'm clear on, on your memo on this, you believe the council may exercise the option, the drainage exemption, is that correct? So that means we're legally clear to move forward to conveying the property to the River Authority?
I do think that, yes.
Can you summarize your memo just briefly? What involves, will there be an election necessary for this?
Under the exception, which Ms. Elder and I discussed, there would not be an election that would be necessary. I do still think that the city should go through the process of posting, you know, notice and having a public hearing if they chose to convey it, just in the interest of, you know, full transparency of the conveyance of the park.
Okay, sounds like we have a way forward then. Is there anything else from the, the members of the public here this evening, or from the River Authority's representatives, or from the council members? If not, then, Mr. Lynn, you're clear that we can put this on the agenda for a future meeting and work with Ms. Gad to make sure we check off all the boxes and move forward in the correct, proper way?
Will do, sir.
Well, thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. I really appreciate the participation. Everyone, have a good evening. That brings us to the last item on the agenda, that the meeting is adjourned at 7:30 PM. Thank you again.